This meeting will be conducted by audio and video conference without the requirement of a physically present form of the Rock Island City Council due to the disaster declaration issued by Governor Pritzker. Because of this order related to COVID-19 health concerns affecting the state and the city, the mayor has determined that an in-person meeting at City Hall with all participants may not be practical or prudent. Older persons and staff may not all be physically present at City Hall due to the disaster, and physical attendance may be limited. To participate remotely during the public hearing or public comment portion of this meeting, please join by phone at 1-402-821-1270, PIN 549237421.
Thank you very much. Rule call.
Alder Person Robinson.
Present.
Hurt.
Here.
Gilbert.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Pulis.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
And Mayor Tomes.
Here. Thank you. Could we rise for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment.
Anybody sign up for public comment back there? Uh-oh, somebody must have, he's having to bring it forth. Thank you, sir. All right. Chad. There you are. Good evening.
I'm Chad Jacobs. Just wanted to come and introduce myself. I'm the new union president for the International Association of Firefighters Local 26. I've been on the department for 20 years next month. Also, some of you may know that I'm on the pension board, currently in my 13th year on there. So if you guys have any questions at any time, feel free to reach out to me. I will email all of you my information so that you can contact.
Wonderful. Sweet. Short, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. And I know we're here for another little ceremony. Does anybody else wish to speak? If they wish, they didn't have to sign up. If you guys want to... All right. Shy group. I know few of you are not so shy, but... I guess I would like to make a couple of comments about Chief Yurkey. He's going to be missed. Retirement is difficult to see him here in street clothes. So obviously, he is officially retired and was kind enough to come in here tonight. But we want to thank you very, very much for dedicating a good portion of your life to serving the city of Rock Island, serving the firefighters, and being a first responder. The cliche has always been, you know, you guys are running in when people are running out. And you've held true to that, and you've run a great department, and the city is indebted internally for that to all of you. But obviously, the chief, for the last number of years, excuse me, has led that charge and run the organization. And so with that, I guess we really appreciate the 32 years of your life that you've committed to this cause. And now you've got another 32, or whatever best with your wife there. Now she's going to have to put up with you instead of us putting up with you. And we could talk to some of these gentlemen back here about having to put up with you, but... And I'm sure there's some stories, but a lot of good laughs and good camaraderie. It's a team effort, and you've done a great job holding that team together. And it's very evident with so many organizations. And in my speech, I even talk about some of the things that the fire department has done, and it's amazing. People think they just sit there and wait, and that's not true. And you were a great example of setting that pace for the good of the community, the well, like I say, whether it be the car seats, whether it be the fire alarms, whether it be in a dunk tank, helping a charity, whether it be helping with kids to understand what it is to be a fireman. And that takes a lot, and we appreciate that. And the community, it was very, very blessed to have you. And so thank you very much. With that, we do have a plaque up here that we'd like to present to you. So if you don't mind coming up, your wife may come up with you also. No? No, we're going to get shy, huh? But come on.
I'm going to go try and dodge pictures again. Oh, I like that jacket.
Well, Ralph's going to be a hard time around dressing like an old man all the time.
That's back in there. I'm telling you.
I love it. Ask for some stuff for Christmas.
Now, Rock Island Fire Department, our chief Jeff Yurkey, 32 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Rock Island. Couldn't be said any better than that. So here, you may have something else hanging in the wall, the big axe. I don't know where you may go with that. So appreciate that very much. And then... Congratulations. I guess the way he's signing me is considered a firefighter, but I do a little bit more of that. And Chief, you're more than welcome to say something if you wish, either there, here, wherever, but it's your choice. Much chance at it.
Wasn't really planning on saying anything, but I said quite a bit at the great send-off I had on Friday. As you mentioned, the fire department isn't about one person, especially not the chief. It's the gentleman back there that put in the work day in and day out to keep the citizens safe. And that's who really deserves the recognition, is the boots on the ground doing the work. Just a very small part of it. Thanks to my family, especially my wife Jean, for their love and support over the years. Thanks to the council members, past and present, who've supported me and shown their confidence in me. And to my previous bosses, Thomas Thomas, Randy Tweet, and now Todd. So thank you for their support as well. It's been a great career, been a great city to work for. We've got the best of the best back there. I'll put them up against anybody, anywhere, just outstanding firefighters and paramedics. And it's been an honor to serve with them for over 32 years. So thanks, everyone.
It certainly has. And by this turnout here, obviously, they appreciate you also, and so thank you. All right. We will move on. You ready?
You are, sir.
We are. Okay. Item number seven.
Do we have to go already? Public comment?
Oh, is there... I forgot about any other virtual comments. Keep forgetting about this. It's wrapped up in... Anybody virtually wish to make a comment? Anybody else in the audience? See none. We are now item number seven.
Minutes from the December 12, 2022 study session.
To approve the minutes, says Purnit.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Item number eight.
Minutes from the December 19, 2022 study session and city council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes, says Purnit.
Move to second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hurt.
Aye.
Good deal. Item number nine.
State of the city address by Mayor Tomes.
Yeah, they're sneaking out now. And I don't blame you. But if anybody will stick around, it's exactly, get comfy and everything else, but...
You're on the clock.
We're on the clock. Get the stopwatch going. And actually, I said this at the end of the last speech, but I'll say it at the beginning of this one. All the things that we're going to talk about here that I'm going to bring up and everything else, obviously, a lot of it comes from the city council and direction and the city manager and everything else. But ultimately, where the rubber meets the road is the city staff. And that's what gets things done and makes these things happen that we're going to talk about. And so that's one thing I know I'm proud of. I know the city council's been proud of. We have an outstanding, outstanding city staff. They go above and beyond in many different ways. And so thank you. We couldn't do it, the citizens, without that dedication that everybody has. So I appreciate that very much. All right. In 2022 was a successful year for the city due to part in a strong community partners and investment in progress. We continue to forge a path forward that uses these partnerships to improve our economy, spur new development, grow our population, and invest in long-term growth. Some of the accomplishments include the allocation of $26.5 million in the American Rescue Plan Act funds that will support capital improvement projects, road maintenance, public safety, local businesses, nonprofits, and more. The city partnered with the Quad City Chamber to secure a $3 million grant to invest in the revitalization of the downtown district with a total investment of $7 million that includes $1.5 million from city TIF funds and $2.5 million from ARPA. City council members passed $160 million balanced budget with a 90-day reserves totaling $9.9 million and a surplus of $1.8 million over reserves. Property taxes have been kept flat while bringing in more revenue. A special service area was established downtown that will use tax revenues to enhance, maintain, beautify the area. The city also filled several key leadership positions, including the city manager, police chief, community and economic development director, finance director, finance manager, and community engagement manager. And most of these were due to retirements. Soon, we'll be announcing a new fire chief, and we look forward to that opportunity. And once again, thank Chief Yurkey for his 32-plus years of dedication to the city. The city offered assistance and in return benefited from many community partnerships in 2022. We continue to support the Friends of Hallberg and anticipate the completion and renovation of Carriage House. Friends of Douglas Park have raised money to install the new lighting in 2023. We hope to sign an agreement with a partner soon to manage the newly formed SSA Special Service Area Downtown. We renewed our contract with DARI, the Development Association of Rock Island, and took forward and look forward to continued economic growth as a result of the ongoing partnership. The city has helped Rock Island Myland School District with community development block grant funds to repair and install sidewalks through Safe Route to Schools Initiative. The city helped Augustana, and we worked together and rebuilt some roads. The Community Carrying Conference hosted an annual Heroes Award, recognizing several city employees in their dedication to the city. In more detail, the $26.5 million in ARPA funds, which the city is continuing to work in refining and putting in place where this money should be spent. But $1 million through the general fund will be for road repairs. $2.6 million to Southwest Treatment Plant Pump Station. $1.5 million for advanced meter infrastructure for the water meters to make it efficient to be able to read and locate leaks sooner. $2.2 million for new citywide software, muchly needed. $2.5 million toward downtown Rock Island revitalization. $1.2 million for funding a portion of the demolition of the downtown parking garage and construction of the new lot. $750,000 to support businesses. $550,000 in funding for public safety. A five-year CIP approved. The city council members also approved a five-year capital improvement plan with $20 million in total spending on various projects funded through a number of sources, whether it be ARPA, gaming tax, general fund tax, TIFs, motor fuel tax, et cetera. Projects include $3.5 million in road and street improvements, $2.1 million for resurfacing 31st Avenue from the Parkway down up to 11th Street, $655,000 for reconstruction of 22nd Street and 35th Avenue, and $334,000 in ARPA funds will be spent to repair the Myland Parkway and reconstruction of 1st Avenue. Community and economic development. In 2022, the private sector invested $65 million in cities in the city toward business expansion and new businesses. As a result, 13 new businesses opened. Through the city partnership with DARI, there were 89 business expansions and attraction projects, 509 business engagements. We communicated one way or the other with 509 businesses, and 18 business celebrations and ribbon cuttings. The CED Department facilitated $5.8 million for financial assistance to businesses, continuing to support those in the city. Housing rehabilitation. Forty owner occupied homes rehabilitated projects were completed in 2022. This was more than we did in 2021. It's a great accomplishment. The bar is set high to then do more in 2023, but it allows people to have a quality home to live in. And $300,000 grant was secured from IDA for additional housing rehabilitation in 2023. The planning and zoning team oversaw the sale of 15 owned city vacant lots, putting them back on the property tax rolls, once again improving the city. The inspection team continues to make improvements with the registering and inspection of long-term and short-term rentals. The CED Department also launched its Pilot Urban Homestead Program with a goal of offering affordable housing while fixing up blighted neighborhoods using federal HUD and IDA funds. Park and Recreation. Rock Island Park and Recreation provides a superior quality of life for our community by offering activities to promote healthy wellness, maintaining clean and safe playgrounds and facilities, and preserving the natural beauty of our parks in open spaces. The Parks and Recreation Department oversaw 21 parks covering 480 acres. Couldn't believe that when I read that. That's a lot of acres. 175 acres, a non-maintained wooded and wetland areas, and 20 acres of prairie restoration in parks and golf courses. The city has partnershiped with the high school and Augustana College, allowing the use of parks and recreation facilities for golf, softball, baseball, cross-country skiing, and others. The city continued its successful partnership with the First Tee, and I once again emphasize partnership. You'll see the common theme again this year with partnerships. But First Tee, an organization that introduces youth to sports of golf, more than 400 kids from the Martin Luther King Center Spring Forward Boys and Girls Club and Big Brothers Big Sisters took golf lessons. Touching a lot of lives. Park and Recreation programs produce direct and indirect revenue for local and regional economies. In 2022, the city had more than 37,000 visits to Whitewater Junction, over $370,000 in sponsorships, grants, donations, bringing in revenue to help cover costs. 45,000 rounds of golf were played on the two golf courses. More than 18,000 people attended special events. More than 250 rentals of Campbell Sports, Douglas Park, Schreba Parks, held weddings and other venues, along with one of the parks even hosts the famous Backwater Gamblers on the Rock River. Over 40 fundraisers, events, and golf outings were held in Rock Island parks and golf courses, helping raise over $200,000 for those local charities. Over 2,000 kayakers participated in the annual River Actions Floodzilla. 95 recreational programs were offered in 2022 with nearly 10,000 participants. There were more than 4,000 pickleball players at RIFAC and Mel McKay, and soon to be another pickleball out in southwest Rock Island. The Rock Island Fitness and Activity Center has 3,900 members and growing, offering 23 fitness classes and once again serving over 2,500 participants. There were 29 youth support leagues and clinics with 1,800 participants, once again touching a lot of lives. The library continues to build upon its commitment in providing literacy and personal enrichment resources for all. The capital campaign with the Rock Island Public Foundation and the Two Rivers YMCA raised over $9 million and more than 400 individuals contributing to this for the renovation of the new branch on 30th Street. It will be named the Watts Midtown Branch Library, named in honor of the late Lorraine Watts and her son Udel, which is the current president of the board. They have a long-lasting impact on the city. The library celebrated its 150th anniversary, November 25th, the first public library to officially open in the state of Illinois. The current... Camaraderie. I'll say that. Boulder was placed at the original library site on the corner of 2nd Avenue and 17th Street. Those that are real recent, the Modern Woodman Bank Building and/or the National Bank, those that are older that don't realize that, cross Rock Island. It's a beautiful little spot, well-maintained by Modern Woodman. So thank you for that placement. Implemented the newly created Staff Idea Committee, which focuses on inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility topics. The group created the Library Idea Statement, which can be found on their website. To provide a variety of educational programs for the community, the library has successfully partnershiped with the University of Iowa Extension Office, Prairie State's Legal Services, Rock Island, South Rock Island Township, Augustana College, Family Resources, Quad City Botanical Center, Rock Island Horticultural Club, ARC. There's just a number of them, a lot more to be read, but once again, continued partnerships to help everyone in Rock Island. More than 5,000 adults participated in adult programming at the library through in-house programs, reading challenges, virtual and passive programs. The library had a 12% increase in its digital circulation via the Overdrive Electronic Book Platform with over 26,000 checkouts in 2022. They held a number of card drives, encouraging people to get their library card. They had 366 new applicants or cards just in September alone, which is also the National Library Card Month, and they partnered with a number of organizations with these sites. Martin Luther King Junior Community Center. The Martin Luther King Junior Community Center held many successful events this year and expanded their outreach in serving the community. MLK Family Fun Day in August had a record-setting turnout of partners, vendors, and more. They had over 3,000 people attend, and I must say, a fun dunk tank also. More than 150 kids were served in the after-school and summer day camp programs. More than 200 Rock Island County families received counseling and case management services. Over 1,000 were reached through the in-school preventive prevention services. And here's a big number. The Thanksgiving Meal Program broke records this year again with over 7,000 plates of food being served and over 200 volunteers and a record number of sponsorships. The West End Revitalization Group recruited a steering committee and has begun work to address challenges and opportunities for the west end of Rock Island. And I must say, wait till 23 and beyond to see the great results that they're going to have. More than 600 kids received Christmas gifts. A community health worker position was added. Finance. The finance department had another great year in financial management and best practices. The city's 2023 budget ordinance was approved using a portion of the $1.7 million in surplus from 2021, so a surplus in 2021 and a surplus in 2022, to support a variety of projects such as downtown special service area, citizens survey, new software for the city clerk. The property tax levy ordinance was passed, keeping the property tax relatively flat. Two different state income taxes, personal property tax replacement, and the income receipts continued to benefit the city of Rock Island, the tune of over $6 million above and beyond expectations. New financial software is expected to improve service delivery to the citizens and businesses, providing more options for bill paying and providing financial information at the click of a button. Bring us up to age. Mobile clicks, easy to use. Citizens have been asking for that for a while. Police Department. The police department continues to work hard to keep the community a safe place to live, work, and play. The department implemented the Illinois Safety Act mandates for law enforcement, including expanded training requirements for police and standardized mental health and decertification reporting. The department completed its transition to the new P-25 radio network for police, fire, and emergency services in Rock Island and Scott Counties across the river throughout the Quad Cities. P-25 brings emergency service communications up to federal standards, so emergency responders can exchange critical communications across agencies and jurisdictions. Not a small undertaking, ladies and gentlemen. When you get five cities at minimum, two counties to work together, same direction, update their equipment, and be efficient with it is a great undertaking, along with the cost of it, and it took some time. But everybody worked together. Once again, partnerships. Myself and Chief Landy and mayors of other cities in the Quad Cities here traveled to Washington, DC, and we met with four U.S. senators, two from Illinois, two from Iowa, to advocate for increased federal law enforcement resources in the Quad Cities to assist the local law enforcement in efforts to reduce violent gun crime. After these meetings, the senators issued statements of support for our request and began a dialogue with the Department of Justice and others to get these resources to the Quad Cities. And once again, we've seen great response so far in movement in this and cooperation amongst the other cities. And it was interesting to be able to get bipartisan support. Two Illinois Democrats senators and two Iowa Republican senators working together in the same direction with the communities to make this happen. That's what it's about. The police department formed a partnership with Family Resources to provide crime victims' support and assistance by assigning a violent crime specialist to the police department. Crisis response services are available 24/7. In 2023, the Rock Island Police Department will partner with the Davenport Police Department and Family Resources to expand the group violent intervention program to Rock Island. This program is being funded by a grant awarded to Family Resources by the Illinois Department of Human Resources for violent prevention. Group Violent Intervention partners with the city, police, community, social services to meet with people and may have connections with, who may have connections with gun violence, and provide resources and support necessary to keep them safe, alive, and out of prison. This was just in the news today, actually, to continue this. Once again, partnership with three organizations to work on crime. Fire Department. By the end of 2022, the fire department responded to approximately 7,600 calls of service, completed 9,500 hours of training, and conducted 1,600 fire and life safety inspections. The department conducted more than 100 child car seat installations and education sessions. Lieutenant Andrew Pratt was honored as the 2022 Firefighter of the Year, continued to partner with the Red Cross of the Quad Cities and Illinois Fire Safety Alliance to install free smoke detectors. And continued community outreach to train all citizens in CPR and AED. And I must remind everybody that in Rock Island... And I must remind everybody that in Rock Island, all its firefighters are paramedics, which helps save lives. They're there first on the scene before they have to be transported to the hospital, and that time can be very critical. Received the two thousand twenty-two E M S Silver Awards from the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Program for Outstanding Care of Patients Suffering from Cardiac Arrest, Stroke, or Heart Attacks. All fire department paramedics were recertified in Advanced Cardiac Sports Life. We also were able to take, uh, have the honor of, uh, actually, bringing in probationary firefighters, not bring them in, but honoring them and making them full-time firefighters for the force. Public Works. The city Public Works Department accomplished many important infrastructure projects in two thousand twenty-two, such as the thirty-fifth street between Sixth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, Water Main and Reconstruction Project. The intersection of the Rock Island Parkway and Eighty-Fifth Avenue West was reconstructed and new sta, uh, new streetlights and make it more safe. The city council approved spending two-point-one million dollars to be, to partly fund, partly funded by ARPA, and the purchase of eight new snowplows and two ambulances. Once again, eight new plows and two ambulances, it's not cheap. Demolition of the downtown parking garage is underway. In its place, a new parking lot will be constructed that will hold two-hundred-and-thirty vehicles and a number of charging stations for electric vehicles. River Heights Road, Valley Drive, and two-thirds of Black Hawk Hills Drive were reconstructed with new P V, P C C pavement. The storm sewer was also replaced in that area. It was funded by motor fuel tax funds. The city of Rock Island has also partnered with Augustana College to provide professional services related to the development of the service line material inventory in compliance with the lead service line replacement notification. And finally, the city continued its partnership with the city, with the Rock Island Arsenal through intergovernmental agreement to provide electrical maintenance, sanitary sewer, lift stations, operations, water treatment, and distribution operations. Once again, I gotta remind you, with the Rock Island Arsenal, federal government, we have this agreement, we were able to save the federal government money, our taxpayers, but also add revenue to the city of Rock Island with this agreement. Rock Island's progress continues in two thousand twenty-three with five major projects currently under construction. The new twenty-five million dollar federal courthouse being built on Eighteenth Street Downtown here, the central part of Illinois, of Downtown District. The three-story fifty-three thousand square foot building will house a multiple departments for the federal government and bring a lot of good-paying jobs downtown. And another positive thing here, this is owned by a private indiv, uh, individuals, so it'll be paying property taxes. The new Y W C A is under construction on Fifth Avenue. The nine million dollar, forty-nine thousand square foot building will increase the current capacity, get this, from a hundred-and-thirty kids' youth capacity to three-hundred-and-fifty, much-needed capacity to help with our youth. The former Tri-City Jewish Center building on Thirtieth Street is being transformed into a combined Rock Island Public Library Branch and the Y M C, the Y M C A facility. Over nine million dollar project, once again, partnership with the two organizations, the city and the Y. The new Rock Island Miles School District Administration Building is under construction, the corner of Sixth Avenue and Twentieth Street. The seven-point-six million dollar facility will house a number of different operations for them, be in their production kitchen, office space, and warehouse space. And of course, as mentioned earlier, the new parking lot, parking lot downtown Rock Island, it's interesting in fact, is that was going to be over five million dollars to repair and maintain the parking ramp. It cost us a little over two million dollars to tear it down and build a new one, but it offered the citizens over three million dollar savings by doing what we're doing, and we'll have a nice new ground-level parking lot with charging stations. And I guess, once and finally, I must say, this town rocks, and thank you very much. All right, we will move on. Item number ten.
Proclamation declaring January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three as Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life and career to the advancement of civil rights, equal treatment, and human decency for all people, and whereas the efforts of Dr. King and the many others involved in the civil rights movement have helped to break down the walls of injustice and allow African-Americans and other minorities to succeed both as individuals and members of society, and whereas the goals and ideals of Dr. King have not yet been fully realized, with that in mind, it is our duty as Americans to continue his struggle and to work toward a more understanding and respectful society. And whereas Martin Luther King Junior Day serves to bring people together in remembrance of this true American hero and encourages citizens to engage in community service, which in turn serves to honor Dr. King's legacy and advance the cause of justice and equality in America.
Now therefore, I'm Mike Tomes, Mayor of the city of Rock Island, proclaim Monday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, in the city of Rock Island, Illinois, and encourage citizens to serve their fellow Americans and help to make this a better community, thereby providing a fitting memorial to the life of Martin Junior, Martin Luther King Junior.
So coming this Monday, starting at ten-thirty at the Martin Luther King Center, we'll have our fortieth, uh, celebration of the memory of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and like to extend our invitation to all of you on city council, as we'll be doing this in person, but we'll also be doing this live streaming via Facebook and on YouTube as well. Please visit our Facebook page and/or our website to find out more information. It will always be an, uh, a wonderful, wonderfully, um, inspirational event where we get to celebrate some of the greatness that occurs in our community and lift it up for the entire, um, Quad City community and beyond to see, hopefully spurring more action for social justice within our community, but more importantly, sharing the story about what a wonderful place Rock Island is to live and to, um, yeah, to live and to, to have your life, um, I'm sorry, to live, work, and play in Rock Island. So, please, I welcome you all, and I hope that we have a record turnout.
Thank you. Item number eleven.
Proclamation declaring January two thousand twenty-three as National Mentoring Month. Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional network of support for young people, and whereas the city of Rock Island recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being, and whereas mentoring programs like Big Brother, Big Sister of the Mississippi Valley make our community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks, and whereas throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic, mentor programs have stepped up to ensure that mentoring relationships continue virtually while also connecting families to resources and services, and whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve higher lifetime economic outcomes through activities like helping them set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connecting them to opportunities, and much more. And whereas research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy, schol, uh, scholastic efficacy, and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support, and whereas mentoring can be an especially effective preventive and intervention strategy for young people with marginalized identities such as youth with disabilities, B I P O C youth, L G B T Q I A plus youth, and youth with experience in foster care, and whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people, and whereas with a mentor, youth facing risk are more likely to enroll in college, less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities, and whereas while one in three young people still grow up without a mentor, demonstrating the need for additional awareness and resources for mentoring programs, and whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Rock Island.
Now therefore, I'm Mike Tomes, Mayor of the city of Rock Island, proclaim January two thousand twenty-three as National Mentoring Month in the city of Rock Island. Is there somebody here or not for this? I don't see, no.
Um, this is Alderman Swanson, and I just wanna say, as a board member for Lead Her, which is a women's mentoring organization, am I very proud that Rock Island is recognizing National Mentoring Month because for youth, for women, and really just for anybody aspiring to be the best that they can be, um, this is an awesome way to go ahead and do it, and so I just wanna thank you all for recognizing that.
Thank you. Very good. Item number twelve.
Consent Agenda. Items A through F.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Claim, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents to McClintock Trucking and Excavation of Silvis, Illinois, for an emergency water main repair at forty-five-twenty-eighteenth
Motion to allow the claim.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I need to recuse myself.
Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Swanson.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Parker. I'm sorry, Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an emergency purchase of a replacement gripper arm assembly for the two thousand twenty-one Mack Neeway truck from Elliott Equipment of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of forty-thousand, forty-seven thousand nine-hundred dollars.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
Was this a new, just an older one that had been placed on the newer truck, or was it a newer arm that, is it under warranty, or, I mean, that, that was a relatively new truck?
It was an, it was a newer arm damaged. Um, one of our employees hit a structure with that arm, and it bent it to where it couldn't be repaired, so...
It's not a warranty item, it's a...
It's not a warranty item, though.
Isn't that like an insured item?
Insured item?
We're self-insured.
Yeah, we're self-insured.
Okay, so I guess, okay, good.
So, the money that we're approving, it was above and beyond what we're insured for, or that's our...
I'd let Rob talk about the insurance portion of it, but we're, we, we are providing funds for this repair out of our waste, or our wastewater, our, um, refuse fund.
If we're the insurer, we gotta pay the insurance claim.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we manually picking up, I mean, we have...
I thought it was insured.
I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Are we, are we manually picking up refuse at this point? Cause I, I think I seen that this morning, it was some...
We have had to modify our pickup and having additional personnel out on a manual route, on a manual truck.
Ouch, that's a big oops.
This.
It's a big oops, yep, and, uh, I mean, not getting into too many details, but we, we have addressed this issue, the employees were properly trained, it was just an accident, unfortunately, two of them happened, uh, pretty much back-to-back, so...
Two accidents?
Two accidents, yep. If you might recall, there was an, an additional arm that you've already approved before this in previous meetings.
I thought you meant two related to this.
No.
All right, thank you.
Rule call, please.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Swanson. Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Hertz.
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a contract extension for the two thousand twenty-two street joint and crack stealing program maintenance contract with Denler of Joliet, Illinois, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
And to approve the extension of the contract and allow the city manager to execute the documents.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item sixteen.
Report from the city clerk regarding a resolution approving the partial release of closed-session minutes and the destruction of audio recordings for the same closed-session minutes.
Move to approve the partial release of closed-session minutes as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved to seconded, any discussion?
You shouldn't raise your hand.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Rock Island Police Department requesting approval of seventy thousand dollars, or with one thousand for each active employed sworn police officer, of ARPA funds for C Y two thousand twenty-three police retention bonuses.
Move to approve the allocation of seventy thousand dollars of ARPA funds for calendar year two thousand twenty-three police retention bonuses.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we're getting it all in. Rule call, please, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Finance Department regarding adjustment to the C Y two thousand twenty-three budget, increasing the ARPA Fund two forty-eight revenue and expenditure budget by thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson. Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item number nineteen.
Report from the Finance Department regarding a budget adjustment for the Community Development Block Grant Fund two forty-two, increasing the expenditure budget by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item number twenty.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding changes to the locations of the community garden sites for the two thousand twenty-three season.
Motion to approve the changes as recommended, removing site number fourteen and allowing staff to replace with alternative, alternative site.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item twenty-one.
Report from General Administration and the Human Resources Department recommending Martin Luther King Junior Day be declared as a holiday in the city of Rock Island.
Motion to approve Martin Luther King Junior Day as a holiday in the city of Rock Island.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Side's long overdue. Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the city manager regarding the appointments of the Freedom of Information Act and Open Meeting Act officers for two thousand twenty-three.
Move to...
Approve. Nope. Motion to approve the appointments as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Rule call.
Alder Person Gilbert.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Hertz.
Aye.
Item twenty-three, other business, good for the cause.
Along with, uh, approving Martin Luther King Junior Day, could we look at Veterans Day, I think that's on the table, but could we please look at that as well, if possible?
Anything else? Can't let the chief get out of this early, I mean...
He's gonna miss staying for that closed session.
Assistant manager, that's, yeah, there you go, there you go, make it stay, you wanna come two weeks from now, no. All right, if not, item twenty-four.
Closed Session, five I L C S one twenty-two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of special employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, um, that includes, uh, uh, public contractors, independent contractors as well. Um, also, I'm gonna add one that wasn't previously printed on the agenda, and that is five I L C S one twenty-two C eleven...